...local level is to empower voters and defend democracy. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. Its mission is to encourage informed and active participation of citizens in government, work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League strengthens our community by promoting voter registration, conducting candidate forms like you're going to be seeing tonight, and informing voters on public policy through education. And now I'll turn it over to Liz Norling, who is moderating tonight, as she's done for many, many years. We're very blessed to have her, actually. Tonight you'll be hearing from candidates for the Washington County Commissioners. Liz?
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to this League of Women Voters forum for the candidates in the November election for Washington County Commissioner in the 5th District. The forum is being broadcast live on Channel 18, which is Comcast, and Channel 8542, which is sentry-linked by the South Washington County Telecommunications Commission, SWCTC. It will also be live web-streamed on the SWCTC website. The order for speaking tonight will begin in alphabetical order and will be rotated thereafter. Candidates' remarks are being timed to assure equality of time. And the seating for the candidates follows suggested guidelines. Questions have been submitted via the local League's website. Questions may also be called or texted in during the live forum at the number at the bottom of your screen, which is 612-756-8164. I will tell you that texting is preferred, so if you can text the questions instead of calling it in, we would greatly appreciate that. The candidates are Michelle Clausen and Lisa Wyke. We will begin with opening statements, and we will start with Michelle Clausen.
Thank you. I just really wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this event first. What they do is very important for us as candidates to get our word out. We just celebrated 100 years of women voting, but we still have a lot more to do. Women still get discriminated against and harassed. The reason why I decided to lead is because I was sexually harassed and assaulted at work. I worked in city government for over a decade. I'm looking to lead as an ethical leadership. I've worked, I am looking to have three main platform agendas: small business advocacy, protecting groundwater, and making racial equity a priority at the county level. My name is Michelle Clausen. I am a single mom, a soccer coach, and a school volunteer, and I've lived in Woodbury for 15 years. I'm running for county commissioner because I care about you, and I care about the county. Clausen cares about the county.
Thank you. Next with her opening statement is Lisa Wyke.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to the League for hosting this. My name is Lisa Wyke, Washington County Commissioner, District 5. I've served on the county board for 11 years. This year I was elected Vice Chair of the Board. I also serve as Chair of the Regional Rail Authority, and I have other leadership roles with the various metro-wide committees in the Twin Cities. I do enjoy the work. I have a science background, which I have found very interesting with the pandemic and the county response. I have worked in clinical laboratory medicine in the past, and then worked for medical device manufacturers in the Twin Cities. I've lived in Woodbury for 23 years. My husband and I moved here, and our two kids graduated from area schools. I've been involved in a lot of civic organizations, including volunteering for the Woodbury Days Event each year, and also the Woodbury Lions. So I'm glad to have this conversation tonight and look forward to talking about the issues.
Thank you. We'll begin with the questions. The first one goes to you, Lisa. What guidelines would you follow to help the district recover economically from the economic downturn caused by the COVID-19 pandemic?
Yes, actually, the county's response has been very well thought out, very strategic. We have worked diligently. I am Chair of the Finance Committee this year, and we have worked to offset costs to businesses and homeowners, along with rental assistance, with the Federal Cares Act money, where instead of putting all of it into the general fund with the county, we have distributed money out as an economic stimulus. This, again, stabilizes tax base, and so this, again, is a better way to make sure that people are employed, can provide for their families. $10 million was appropriated in grants, direct grants, to area businesses, up to $15,000 for eligible applicants, and along with homeowners and rental assistance. We've had a good response to that, and recently the county board even expanded eligibility criteria for a second round that will end, actually, on September 24th.
Thank you. The question now goes to Michelle.
Can you repeat the question again?
What guidelines would you follow to help the county recover economically from the economic downturn caused by the COVID-19 pandemic?
Thank you. My idea is that I would like to really expand right now with what we're doing for businesses. I am a mentor for SCORE, and I talk to businesses every week, and they are telling me that they are struggling to make ends meet. Some businesses have thrived and some businesses haven't, but not everyone is meeting the Cares Act grants and loans that are available. We need to do more for businesses, and we do that by mentoring them and creating partnerships regionally. I would like to do a multi-jurisdictional type of, the multi-jurisdictional type of plan, and that is what I would like to do.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Maybe we can return to it. I'm sorry there was a little bit of interruption.
There was some confusion. I'm sorry, Michelle.
It's okay. Where am I on time?
Why don't you start?
Oh, okay, okay, great. Thank you. So the question is, the guidelines following COVID, and what am I going to do, or what would my idea be about the economy? So what I would like to do is, I've worked with a lot of businesses as a SCORE mentor, and I've talked to them, and a lot of them are not being able to get the CARE grants and loans that are available. And so we need to do more for businesses. What my idea is to do a lot more partnerships that I've seen from Ramsey County. We need to do multi-jurisdictional, that means state, county, and city-type programs to really help these businesses. And we can't be afraid to mentor them at this time. We need to help them get out of the struggles that they're experiencing. My father had lost his job at a very, his business went under when I was very young, and we lost our house. And I definitely know what it's like to live in poverty because your business failed. So this has touched me very hard, and I think that we need to do more for what's going on right now with, what's going on with the county right now with businesses.
Thank you. Any additional comments now?
I would just briefly say today the county board did pass the preliminary levy for 2021, and we are holding the line on the property tax levy. There will be no increase for 2021. The county is able to do this by using one-time revenues, and the financial health of Washington County is strong. We have strong reserves, and so this is not a risk in any way. This was, these strategies were reviewed also through the Finance Committee. By holding the line on the budget, staff was able to identify up to $10 million in operating costs and deferred personnel, you know, new hires for the next year, but department leadership in all functional areas has said this is not sustainable for the 2022 budget.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
My only comment is that I'm, it's wonderful to hear. That has been something that I've really expressed, and I've seen that Ramsey County has done the same, so I'm glad to see that Washington County is taking the same action in that.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next question, and it will go to you first, Michelle. One of the county's priorities is to stem the shifting of state taxes to the county property taxpayers. How satisfied are you with the progress on this issue?
Can you repeat that again? Stem taxes?
One of the county's priorities is to stem the shifting of state taxes to county property taxpayers. How satisfied are you with the progress on this issue?
My problem with raising anything on property taxes is that we're going through a pandemic, and we can't do this to people. When we hear that there's a flat property tax, that's great, but we also have to remember that property values do increase, so that means your taxes may still go up. Plus, we also have to consider the school districts, their raises in taxes, and the city. So all of those go together, and just because the county is doing that, it doesn't mean that they're not going to be taxed heavily on the other end. And because we don't, I'll talk to each other, working in city government, I can tell you that we don't talk to each other. We don't know what the school budget's going to be. We don't know what the city's budget's going to be. And I think conversations like that need to be had in order to really decide whether shifting stem taxes is a good idea.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. I think the way that I understand this question really gets to the unfunded state mandates for county services. County services are core and essential services. It's safety net services, provides protection for our most destitute and downtrodden residents. And in the past, Washington County has always presented a legislative agenda each year, and toward the end of the booklet is an itemized listing by functional area of all of the things that are unfunded by state lawmakers. County government in Minnesota is an administrative arm of the state, so we are delivering state programs. Eighty to 85% of the operating budget is encumbered by either state or federal law. And so over time, the state really has not fulfilled their funding obligations. We are good at finding partners, you know, cities. Washington County partners a lot with Ramsey County, which is great, brings value to the citizens, and Ramsey County is usually the higher funding partner, maybe a 70 to 30% ratio.
Thank you. Additional comments?
No additional comments.
We'll move on to the next question then, and it'll go to you, Michelle, first. What are your priorities for funding county programs in the face of rising costs?
With the, I have to say that with the rising costs, we also have more businesses and more houses getting built. So we have to take that into consideration before you assume that we're going to raise taxes. But my idea is that we do need to start generating revenue, and I have a really good idea for that. I would like to expand our tourism in Washington County and really take advantage of our beautiful St. Croix River. It's something that I really think if we invest in tourism, that it will come back to us twofold. So when we are under the, all these strengths, all these budget constraints, we need to be innovative, and we need to think of ideas on how to generate revenue. We do that by tourism.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. Again, I think this is find more funding partners, again, to look for private partner funding opportunities. With the increasing costs, again, it is to continue to remind our state and federal partners that we do need the funding, intergovernmental funds, to produce quality programs, but keep the pressure off of the property tax. Over the 11 years that I've served on the board, I do tend to believe in shifting revenue onto user fees. An example would be more reliance on things like the wheelage tax. If you own and operate one, two, or several vehicles, then you should pay to use the roads. Roads are a consumable product. Every time you drive on one, you basically take a bite out of the sandwich. We do have things like, we're a border county in the metro, and so we've got Wisconsin to the east, and they are using interstate highways, of course, but then to access retail shopping and recreational centers, they are using county roads but really not paying for the degradation.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
One additional comment I had, and I've had this for well over 15 years, when I was getting my master's at Hamlin, a question was, how can we repair the budget at the state level? And you just brought up something that I thought about a long time ago: tolls.
Mm-hmm.
And right when Wiscon, right before Wisconsin comes in, I'm sorry that it has to happen, but if we continue the cost of the roads, the roads are their most expensive cost that we have, and with our, with climate change and with our increased pressure that we're putting on to these roads, they're costing us, we have to repair them every 15 years, and the cost and the assessments are ridiculous. So we need to do more, and we need to think better.
Thank you. Lisa, additional comments?
No, I would just say if we were both running for the legislature, we agree on this, so she can move it, and I'd second the motion. I do think that, I think tolls at these interstate crossings, especially when you consider the St. Croix River as a federally protected river. I mean, Washington County is bordered on two sides by rivers. This means there's not just free flow of citizens, commerce, goods, you know, products, services. It's very expensive to build a new bridge across the St. Croix River. It took 40 years to navigate the Wild and Scenic River Act, which I support that. That was appropriate. It is to protect that river environmentally and even aesthetically. But anyway, so that concludes my remarks on that.
We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Michelle. Delivering human services is assigned to the counties in Minnesota. What changes would you propose to the way human services are delivered in Washington County?
You know, I haven't experienced anything, I haven't experienced a bad, a bad experience with human services. So it is one area that I realize coming into this position, I would have to get to know. It's, I do understand, you know, child support and child advocacy. Obviously, for myself, as a child who was, was poor, I took advantage of some of these services that are very important to me. So I do have, I do hold, you know, something deep in my heart for human services and public health.
Thank you. Lisa?
I don't necessarily have any ideas on how to change the delivery for human services. Obviously, with the pandemic and the shifts to virtual, you know, check-ins and visits, I serve on the family, Healthy Families Initiative, which is actually more than just metropolitan counties, it is some of the outstate counties. This is like the nursing home-based visit programs, where you have nurses come in or train social workers to work with high-risk families and make sure that the kids, you know, and the adjustments, especially for a new baby, but maybe at high risk, maybe there's under, as far as underemployed parent or financial stress on the family, that they have somebody, almost like a mentor to the family that comes in. At the last committee meeting, they said that this has had many challenges, where they actually cannot now come into the home and can only do the virtual check-ins. They are afraid that the child protection may be at risk.
Additional comments, Michelle?
No additional comments.
Okay. We'll move on to the next question, and it goes to you first, Lisa. How can county voters be confident about the safety and security of our elections?
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, thank you for that question. That is a core function of counties, is to deliver secure elections. Part of the way is to work with legal women voters. I certainly received a lot of postcards and correspondence from individuals saying that during redistricting, this is a census year, and so that whole redistricting cycle starts first in a few months at the Minnesota Legislature, and this is to produce fair voter maps, again, where with changing political boundaries, incumbent politicians should not be selecting who's going to vote for them. This should be voters who get to choose who represents them. And so I think fair elections is holding people accountable. Public processes, this has to be transparent, draft maps that are open for review, just two-way communication, get out into the public, public hearings. And, you know, maybe even after COVID, we continue with virtual check-in. You know, the county board right now does that, where you can call in rather than drive to Stillwater.
Thank you. Michelle?
How can county voters be secured?
Confident.
Confident?
About the safety and security.
About the security. Confident about it, okay. So I worked as a city clerk for more than 10 years administering elections, and I will tell you that President Trump, President Trump's remarks about elections is false. It never in my life did I think that we would have a president who would talk, basically misinformation continuously. The thing is, is our county and our elected, our election judges and our city clerks spend hours and hours in training, hours and hours in training. We have an election logbook of this thick of how to handle processes. I'm telling you that your vote counts, and it matters, and it is secure. I have heard Steve Simon, the Secretary of State, over and over again talk about your ballots are not printed, and in a different country, they are printed in Minnesota, and you have to believe that we have the training for safe and secure voting.
Thank you. Additional comments, Lisa?
No, I would just say that this is such a different election year, that with, you know, pandemic and social distancing, I really would encourage people to get that absentee ballot, especially where they can vote at home, and that the elections are secure. I completely agree with that. And so if you want to vote absentee in person, you know, with no excuse, you can do that at Central Park, Stillwater Government Center, the different locations. But if you want to vote at home, you also have the option, if you're not comfortable putting it through the mail, is to drop it off at one of these in-person absentee voting locations.
Thank you. Any other comments, Michelle?
I just want to just add a little bit, something further to what she said, and that is that you can request your ballot on MNvotes.org, and you can also track it to make sure it comes to you. So once you do get it in the mail, fill it out, and you can just drive it, I would actually drive it to Central Park. It's because of the problems that we've had with the mail system. Steve Simon is also saying that's a good idea, is to drop them off, so, thanks.
And I will add a comment from Joe Mansky, who's Ramsey County Elections. He suggests that if you're doing a mail-in vote, that it be mailed by October 16th.
Absolutely.
October 16th.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go on to the next question. It goes to you first, Michelle. Ramsey County has declared racism as a public emergency. What is your stance on county government making that declaration, and why?
You know, I believe Ramsey, Ramsey County is, first of all, very different than Washington County in general, in the way that they, even their organization is formed a little different. There is a lot more staff that they have available. A national emergency, I think that, it depends on how they're framing that. They are putting action, and they are putting money towards this. They've changed some of their goals, which I really, I support, and I want Washington County to do the same. When I see things as our goals for Washington County, put the word "citizen" in there, I think that automatically is an unwelcome word, and that needs to be reframed. And I think Ramsey County is somebody that I would, as, if I was a county commissioner, I'm going to watch everything that they're doing and pick what things that I think are going to work in our culture and our organization. But I do think it's something that, it's our top priority.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. Yeah, systemic racism is definitely a public health emergency. This is my opinion. The county board in Washington County has not actually passed a declaration or a resolution declaring that, but Washington County is a member of the National Association of Counties, which has over 3,000 county members, and many counties throughout the country have adopted resolutions that systemic racism is a public health emergency, because racism has been shown to be a social determinant of health. There is less access to education, there is less access to health, medical treatment, less access to fair housing. You know, the practices that have been deplorable in the past, that have really segregated populations and prevented equal and fair opportunity are terrible parts of the history of the country, and it still continues in parts of cities, and really, and it needs to stop.
Thank you. Additional comments?
My additional comment is I worked as a city clerk for Landfall, which is in Washington County, and it is one population that is struggles for public health, and there is, you know, systemic racism there as well. There's Spanish-speaking individuals that live there, and it is, as part of the Housing Redevelopment Authority in Washington County, I would like them to put that more as a priority as well.
Thank you. Anything else, Lisa?
I think just briefly, you know, as far as racism, early educational opportunities through our public libraries are such a great opportunity. It's families that can bond together, spend more time reading books. Our librarians have got great programs that can talk about other cultures, but also the library does have more access to technology, things like Wi-Fi access, the hotspots, or just come into the library and use computers. Again, it's this equal access to technology and resources, that this is what is inherent in systemic racism. So you really need to use an equity lens to look at all procedures and policy.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Lisa. What lessons have we learned from the COVID-19 pandemic and its impact on District 5 and the county?
Lessons learned? I think the main thing is to just have everyday resilience of staff and department leadership as far as, for government to work efficiently in the worst of times, it really needs to have well-oiled systems, practices, and resource flows in the best of times. So it's not the time to be learning procedures when you're in the middle of an emergency. So the system needs to be responsive to citizens' needs and really the changing realities. Effective coordination mechanisms between national and local governments are critical. So we need to strengthen local systems and just build the capacity of local officials to manage policy response, like from health to the economy to social protection, and investment in local government, training of staff is really key.
Thank you. Michelle?
Excuse me. My, I kind of, I'm a little different in the way that I would answer this. I feel like the lesson I learned from the county during COVID is that they don't do well in communicating emergencies, they don't do well at communicating what's really happening. And that is one thing that I, as somebody who was in communications and marketing for so long, I feel like it was something that really, really showed me that the county doesn't understand how important it is to get the word out to constituents and businesses of what's going on. I maybe had one or two shares of the small business grant that was awarded. The word's just not getting out, and their newsletters go out quarterly, and they didn't even have, they had business information on the sixth page during COVID. And so they have a lot of improvements to make, in my opinion.
Thank you. Additional comments, Lisa?
No, thank you. That's great input, you know, with all of the new technology platforms, we have actually increased staff and resources on that. But it's, as far as social media, email, making sure that residents opt in, you know, you really have to have that two-way communication so that citizens contact us as well and look for information. But families are very busy, you know, there are multiple demands, especially with young families with the distance learning, you know, really, parents and kids, everyone are juggling multiple demands. So to go out and look for new information, I think is, you know, too much of a burden sometimes on people.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Michelle?
I disagree. I am a woman who has two kids, and I want the information to be available to me. I want to look at your website and see what I'm looking for immediately. I don't want to have to search through things. I want to know what is your COVID Act? I want to know what are we doing, what are, you know, anything in regards to what you're working on would be great. I shouldn't have to search for what you guys are doing. If you guys aren't promoting yourselves, then you're not being promoted. And at this point, you know, if you were a business, you'd be failing if you don't actually market your products, and that's why you have to market better than what you're doing right now.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Michelle. What would you recommend for improving the county's recycling and environmental efforts?
You know, I think the county's doing a wonderful job with biz recycling. I really appreciate that. I like the fact that they're pushing businesses to recycle more. I know that the county just got another building to put, you know, different types of waste, and that was great, that they decided to buy that property so that people could put their tree branches and leaves and whatever else over there. I mean, I live over there, so I saw the line at one point, and I was, people were freaking out because they thought they were going to close it. But I think that Washington- But I think that Washington County and that area specifically is doing a really good job. And I've actually worked with that department, working in Washington County. And I think that they continue to get the grants that they need and push their agenda forward. I think they're gonna be, do really well in the future. But they do need support and more partnerships.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. We are partnering with Ramsey County. There's been an initiative for four years to really stand up the Newport Recycling and Energy Center. Right now, we do process municipal solid waste and try to recover any valuable recyclables, plastics, metals that the resident did not source separate at home. But as far as an improvement, we are working diligently on adding curbside collection of kitchen organics. This would remove moisture from the refuse-derived fuel product that is produced right now, which is actually a solid material, kind of a briquet size. That is then turned into electricity via a private sector partner, Excel Energy. It actually powers 40,000 homes annually with electricity. If we could remove the moisture, it would increase the quality of the fuel. It would burn at a higher BTU and it would be more flexible, possibly a liquid fuel that could power vehicles.
Additional comments, Michelle?
Well, this sounds amazing. So what, I mean, I guess I have a question. Can I ask her a follow-up question? Because I don't, I didn't know anything about the kitchen waste. Are you, are you providing anything for them to put the kitchen waste in?
Yes, there would be a blue bag that would be provided at no additional cost to residents by their sanitation service. And so then homeowners would actually, they source separate at home. So we do need that partnership with citizens. And you put the food scraps into the blue bag and actually it just goes out in one of your carts and out to the curb. There's a $42 million enhancement to the facility that's proposed that would add optics to look for the blue bags and then robotic arms to come in. And they take the bags and pull them off of these lines that are moving. So the governor and the different, the House and Senate bonding committees came through. And there are videos that you can watch, you know, again, technology so that people don't have to try to imagine. They could actually see what this would look like. But it would add a line that is dedicated to removing organics, again, to improve the quality of the fuel. Because it kinda gets to that movie Back to the Future where Doc Brown drops the half-eaten banana under the hood of the DeLorean and then they fly off into the future. I think we're only 15 years away from that.
Fly away?
I think, no, using food right in a, in a vehicle, but.
Any additional?
That's amazing. I guess I have a follow-up question is what would, would the garbage haulers then be the same haulers that they're currently using? Because you know how if we tried to switch over to just one hauler, we all know what happens.
Right.
So.
Yeah, no organized collection is proposed. The two counties in the partnership enacted waste segregation a few years ago. What that means is that any number of businesses are able to operate. There's no restrictions. However, any trash collected in Ramsey or Washington Counties must be brought to the Newport Center. So that means there's over half a million people that live in Ramsey County and over a quarter of a million people that live in Washington County. So you're getting over three-quarters of a million people and that's just residents. We're also talking commercial businesses or even the big events like the state fair. Now, that didn't happen this year, but, you know, Excel Energy Center in downtown St. Paul, the sports stadiums. There are all these venues. Every piece of trash in Washington or Ramsey County goes to the Newport Center. And you talk to the Newport candidates for office. And Mayor Dan Lund does serve on the Recycling and Energy Board. And actually, the Assistant Commissioner to the PCA also serves on this board. I'm a delegate to it this year. And again, Ramsey County, Washington County, Ramsey County funds 70% of the costs. So for Washington County, this is a great partner. And then we also partner with Ramsey County, like on the Gold Line for the bus rapid transit. So there really is a lot of partnership among local counties in the Twin Cities.
I always learn a lot at forums and I'm learning a lot tonight. Do you have any other comments, Michelle?
The only other comment I have is that this actually is really gonna help landfills too. By taking away, they've, they've been trying this. This is, this is not new. They wanted businesses to start taking out the food from garbages. And it's to prevent the rot in landfills. And, you know, there is a lot of landfills. People just don't know where they are, but there are, even in Washington County. So this is great. I'm excited.
Thank you very much, both of you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Lisa. What is the county's role, if any, for using the money from the 3M settlement from the groundwater contamination issue?
Washington County is tracking that closely. Of course, our public health staff are heavily involved. There's been collaborative efforts and communications with state PCA officials and the public, along with community leaders in the city of Woodbury. Everyone is working together to find the best solutions. I was just on a conference call this past week where the PCA was actually outlining using data and input from public and the various means to put forward some suggestions for next steps. And the big issue for Woodbury and Washington County in general is where would, what would be the source of future drinking water? We know it would be clean and safe, but there are, right now, all drinking water in Washington County comes from groundwater. Ramsey County has treated water from rivers, so it's really surface water. And there is a preference to stay on groundwater, but using local treatment systems.
Thank you. Michelle?
You know, my biggest fear in this is that the PFAS that they have found in our water is gonna be there always and never gonna go away. You know, it's, the $800 million settlement that we got from 3M is fantastic. And I'm excited to see what the PCA and the DNR are going to decide to do. But I really implore that the county recognizes that their role is more than just watching. I really think that, especially with something like this, you need to be intricately involved in it. That's what I would wanna do as a county commissioner, is I'd wanna be very much involved in this because this is actually, this affects everybody. And this is the number one worry out of all of my friends and neighbors and Woodbury residents that I've talked to. And we just need to promise that we are gonna be diligent in keeping track of what happens.
Thank you. Additional comments, Lisa?
Just on that phone call, it did look like PCA is supporting a groundwater treatment system or with local treatment systems. And follow-up then with city officials afterwards was that they were glad to hear that. There'll be three proposed solutions for public review. So there's gonna be a robust public comment period for the next couple of months. And for, it's kind of, it is a collaborative decision-making process. But as far as the cities, I do feel strongly in local control. And so I would not usurp local control in that areas where city leaders really have the main voice. I think that they should lead in that area.
Thank you. Michelle?
I agree they should lead. I just want them to feel supported by the county. And I've talked to some and I want to just continuously share that we need to be more available for them.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Michelle. How will you propose to keep county infrastructure up to date and in good repair?
Well, you know, a lot of that comes to investing in our infrastructure and making sure that we have capital expenses. And from what Lisa has talked about, she says that our reserves are very strong. I haven't looked at the reserve part of the budget, but she says they're very strong, which enables them not to increase taxes. So I believe that they, being that they have a strong investment, they probably have a good strategy of keeping their infrastructure repaired. And if I could be wrong, but I would also love to add more infrastructure. Tourism is something I'm really interested in. And I think with all of our parks and trails, we could really do something with those small cities that Bayport, you know, St. Croix Beach, Lakeland, and really help those communities also expand and have more economic growth.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, this kinda gets, again, back to what I said earlier about user fees and really trying to shift the pressure off of property tax. So when the county, with my support, increased the wheelage tax up to, actually it's the limit allowed by state statute, this has resulted in great news. We are no longer using property taxes for road repair. It is coming directly from wheelage tax. This was an effort over several years. However, now the county also has use or access to sales tax. And in Minnesota, the legislature does not collect sales tax on clothing or groceries. So it is discretionary spending or luxury items in general. And so this would be my proposal through the public hearing process would be to look at updating the program of projects list and shifting and expanding to a higher use of sales tax. This would enable transportation and transportation-related facilities to be funded with that revenue.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Yeah, I was in, not responsible, but I was one of the helpers for franchise fees that was established in a city that I worked at and I helped communicate that. And we also had a budget that went from the franchise fees collected and that was for streets and for trails that went directly to the fund. And that was my idea. I like transparency. I like to see the money going exactly where it's supposed to go. So I like when people do the wheelage tax fund so that you can see the money going in. But I would like to maybe think about a water tax. We've had a lot of people on the St. Croix River boating and I feel like we could potentially tax some of those people as well. We've had some parades. We've had lots of protests over there. And I feel like we, instead of always increasing sales tax, we need to come up with more creative ideas.
Thank you. Anything else, Lisa?
I would just briefly add that obviously doing projects together can save taxpayers money. So it is already the county's process through our capital improvement plan to bring projects through a five-year planning process with public input and work with local leaders. So in, with the city of Woodbury, there are two seasons in Minnesota. The joke is, you know, road repair in winter. And so right now motorists are navigating the county road improvements, expansion and safety improvements on County Road 19. But this has been done in collaboration with the city and the city will repair and upgrade the local streets next year. And that does save money.
Thank you. Let's move on to another transportation question. It goes to you first, Lisa. What is the county doing to get more public transit options for this district?
Yes, that's a great question because weak investment in transit can lead to economic disadvantage. Really, all transportation projects need to also be looked at for their economic development potential. This is gonna be even more important as we're trying to recover from the economic downturn and the COVID-induced recession. We are working on the Gold Line BRT, which is Permanent Modern Transitway Corridor, 10 miles from Union Depot to the 494 BRT station stop, which would be the end of the line. And it is buses running in a dedicated lane. So it's expanding current roads. The Frontage Road along on the north side of I-94 with well-designed, clean and safe station stops one mile apart. Economic development happens within a zone around those station stops. Private investors will come in and actually develop along the line, but specifically at areas where people will park and access the transit.
Thank you. Michelle?
You know, I'm very excited about the Gold Line. I first heard of it when I was in Landfall and I was excited to know that we'd have a business rapid transit. I was never happy with the Met Council that we didn't get a line. I feel like we should have. But I'm excited that it's gonna expand businesses. It's gonna, it's gonna expand job growth. And it also makes us more marketable as a place where people wanna come and start their business. And what I foresee for Woodbury and for Washington County is that we don't, we shouldn't have to leave our community to go to Minneapolis and St. Paul to work. We really all want to be able to stay within our community so that we can, you know, coach soccer and go to volunteer for our kids at school and have lunch with them. That's important to us. So I absolutely support this. But I really want communication to be improved with this. People vary, nobody really knows what's going on with Gold Line. I've talked to the council as well. I feel, I feel like they also need to understand it a little bit more. And it's an area that needs to be communicated to the constituents because they're the ones that are gonna be using it.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Yeah, the Gold Line project has been a 10-year project. And so as we move now into the next couple of months, there are key regulatory points that are coming up. The FTA will make decisions on whether or not the Gold Line can move into final engineering. So to expand even more use of transit, people have said to me that their concern is that it does access over to the north and west side of the city for those communities. How do you reach out to the east side? And one system that I don't have a funding source yet would maybe to be, to provide circulator service or maybe even the ride-sharing options and involve the private sector.
Thank you. Additional comments, Michelle?
And I, I think that's a great idea because senior citizens, they, there are a lot in that other area that she's talking about. And there's townhomes and there's more development even coming with more townhomes and they're advertising to seniors. And so there is a gap. And that is how transit happens. Transit, unfortunately, you build it and then you have to build more and more and more. And so that is something that they have to consider and I'm glad they're considering it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Michelle, and it's on affordable housing. What is the county's and your position on the need for affordable housing? And when you answer this, will you also define what affordable is and how many exist and are planned in Washington County?
Well, I can't tell you on the top of my head how many we have. I know that we could definitely do a better job in Woodbury for affordable housing. Affordable housing to me and what they think, what, what was it? The, there was multiple questions on that one.
So what is your position on the need for it?
The need, okay.
And then what would you define as affordable?
Define, okay. So the definition for affordable homes, it's, you know, it depends on how much that person makes and if it should be within, what, 30 to 40% of what they make. So depending on what that is in Washington County, which I don't know off the top of my head, I, the need is going to be there. We create more businesses, we are going to have different levels of pay. And for people to have to depend on going back to transit and go back home is unfair. We definitely, I'm sorry, we definitely need to do more affordable housing for that.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, I completely agree. We need more affordable housing. It is the income restrictions. Our Community Development Agency is an independent board, governing board in Washington County. The county commissioners appoint CDA commissioners. So they, and I do, again, local control. We work and listen to their projects where they're, again, able to leverage federal dollars. But there has been a heavy emphasis on the need for more senior housing. So it was exciting to go to two ribbon cuttings in my district, the Legends of Woodbury and the Glen at Tower Drive and Valley Creek Road. Again, this keeps, it promotes community and neighborhood stability, keeps extended family close to each other, again, in times of pandemic where extended family can support each other.
Thank you. Additional comments?
My, just my additional comment is that, you know, Landfall is affordable housing. And that is an entire community that's a city. So I do wanna say that Washington County does have that. It's just, we are District Five and Woodbury does need to have more affordable housing.
Anything else, Lisa?
Just briefly, I think, you know, the life cycle housing and then to support businesses. A lot of times if individuals don't really have access to a vehicle or transit, there can be transit deserts as far as, especially our long and narrow county. So then the next strategy would be to have workforce housing that is quality and again, maybe close to other public investments such as libraries or transit.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first, Lisa. What are your top two or three platform priorities?
Well, my top platform priority is to protect the financial health of Washington County to outlast the pandemic. This includes maintaining the two AAA bond ratings, which are the highest. This includes maintaining the two AAA bond ratings, which are the highest attainable and allows the county to bond at the most favorable terms and at the lowest interest rate. The county redistricting work must produce fair maps that offer citizens the ability to choose who represents them, as I said in my opening remarks. I will work transparency to produce voter-powered maps. I have been through this process in the past. The Minnesota Legislature will work in just a few months from now. And if the maps are not vetoed by the governor or legally challenged into the courts, cities would work next, next summer and then actually counties could be redrawing political boundaries one year from right now. And because of the population growth in Woodbury, another election will likely be held in District 5 in 2022. And would could also result in another two-year term and another election in 2024.
Michelle?
I heard that we're not going to get an actual vaccine, vaccine, vaccine for COVID till 2024. So that will be an interesting year for us. My three main platform agendas is small business advocacy. Being that I mentor businesses, it is something that I believe in. We need to make sure that we're there for them during a time of need. And that means that sometimes we, we help them more than we have in the past. Because you know, usually people said free market, you can't, you can't help businesses, but you can. There's a lot of things that we can do to help. And another part of my platform is racial equity throughout, making it a priority at the county level. And that means examining our county goals and, you know, and our policies. And making our, having our cities or our county employees demographically look like our demographics, which, you know, we would like that to be reflected. Another big part of mine is the authentic community engagement that I would like. I would like them to see me and be able to wave and know who I am. And I want to be more prominent as a leader in the, in the community.
Thank you. Additional comments?
Yeah, thank you. Additional platform goals would be the County Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, just formed in March, has my support to reverse systemic racism in, both in the work environment and for public facing services. But the complex work to divert people with mental illness from jail also will continue into next year. It's called the Stepping Up Program. And it lowers costs to taxpayers. We divert people that are nonviolent offenders into community service projects. This results in savings of over a million dollars a year. And obviously jail is not the answer if you have a mental illness and just increases public expenditure.
Thank you. Additional comments, Michelle?
No, I don't have any.
Then we'll move on to the next question. It goes to you first. What will you do to ensure that our community stays, stays safe?
Well, I will continue to, and I would like to continue to invest in our public safety. I think that we also need to, we need to make ourselves more open as leaders to form a safe community. And it's by telling us and showing us that it's safe, right? I don't feel like there's anybody at the county level that is telling me that everything was going to be okay when COVID happened. I was hoping that someone would say when George Floyd's murder happened, Black Lives Matter, you're welcomed. And I didn't hear anything and I was frustrated by that. There are times that we need leaders and these are the times that we need strong leaders to help us through these tough times. And by telling us, you're okay, you're safe. When we had riots that were coming through Oakdale and Woodbury, my friends were very scared. You know, I'm from the east side of St. Paul, so I wasn't. But you know, people were very scared. And I just, that is, I can't say that enough.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. I do believe the first charter of government is to protect its citizens and would just remind the public, the county sheriff is an elected official. And so, you know, he has that election certificate and is an elected official in his own right. So I would continue to support the programs coming from the county sheriff and his leadership team. They are trained in law enforcement response and I value their judgment and the fact that he runs countywide, all candidates for county sheriff do. And so that is the vetting process. I would continue to support training, the virtual training at the Hero Center. Washington County does have an investment in that joint facility with the cities of Cottage Grove and Woodbury. And so that training so that you can guard against just the instincts or, you know, that is prone for all humans to respond in crisis response situations. But also perhaps more use of canine officers could help deputies and the public.
Thank you. Any additional comments, Michelle? And we will conclude our questions.
Okay.
And we will move to closing comments and we will go in the reverse order that we had opening. So Lisa, you can go first.
Well, thank you to the League for tonight's forum. I feel that elections basically are job interviews. There are 35,000 registered voters and so that's basically 35,000 hiring managers that we're talking to tonight. As I've traveled for my campaign, I've enjoyed connecting with constituents, small business owners and community leaders to hear firsthand, you know, their most pressing concerns and, and ideas too for solutions. So it is a two-way conversation. I have an open door policy and continue, I, I do like interacting with the public. We've got some, some great creative thinkers out there. My candidacy does offer continuity during crisis with fast approaching and competing deadlines to keep major transportation and the renewable energy projects on a schedule. Please visit my website, wykforcommissioner.com for more information and connect with me on social media, especially LinkedIn has a detailed work history for voters who would like to see my credentials.
Thank you. Now with our closing statements, Michelle Claussen.
I just wanted to thank you guys again for inviting me here. This was very fun for me. I'm usually the one supporting council, so I was very honored to be asked to answer some questions. I am endorsed by the DFL Senate 53. I'm endorsed by ASME. And I'm also endorsed by Minnesota 350, who are waging the war against climate change. Those are, those endorsements are a big deal to me and I'm very happy about that. I'm a very approachable and a passionate leader. I believe that I will listen to you because I think that you guys matter and I think, and I care about you. And that's why my slogan is Claussen Cares for the County. Learn more about me at michelleclaussen.com and also on Facebook and Twitter.
Thank you. Those are your two candidates for Washington County Commissioner in the 5th District. The League thanks the candidates for their participation, the SWCTC for broadcasting this event, the city of Woodbury for the use of their facilities, our League volunteers and you, the audience, for your attendance and interest. Let your voice be heard and vote. Thank you and good night.